You probably don't have that feature for whatever reason. There's going to be something else you can click on. I just haven't used this on an iPad before.
Do you have to scroll down with the arrow to mute and unmute, John? On the iPad?
No, that mute and unmute appeared. When we were discussing it, it came on the main screen.
Alrighty.
I keep on saying waiting. Is that the meeting waiting to start?
No, the meeting started.
Meeting started. It started at four.
So it has to fall now.
You're going to call John Bucelli?
Uh, yes. One moment. Are all the members on?
Yes, I'm on.
Yes.
Is Arthur on?
Arthur's here too.
Okay, let me call.
Well, I think, no, is Arthur here yet? No. Oh, yes, he is.
Okay.
It says my name on it, Arthur, because we copied the link, but that's okay.
John, I see here, I'm looking online.
And you're on mute, Arthur.
John Henry, it says swipe left from the active speaker view to display gallery view on an iPad. Sweep left from the active speaker view.
I don't have an active speaker view. Listen, I have joined with video, join with video, which I did. And I'll try this up here. All I'm seeing is a picture of myself.
He's on an iPad.
Yeah. Video, I'm seeing video preview.
Upper right hand corner, swipe left.
Nope.
You should just be able to touch it, John. Upper right hand corner, just touch it and you'll see a drop down screen.
He's on an iPad.
Yeah, I'm on an iPad also. Upper right above everybody else.
I'm, the only thing that I'm seeing, should I knock off video preview? Should I cancel that?
Yeah, try that.
Nothing happening.
You see where it says live, custom live streaming service?
I don't have that.
You don't have that?
Nope.
It should be on your left.
Well, you look good, John, anyway.
Yeah, you look. All right, let me give Al a call.
John, what was your, what was your issue? I'm sorry, I had to take a phone call.
Pardon?
I only see myself and I don't see everybody else.
John can get the gallery view, Ashley, for some.
And on the screen.
I have never tried using it on an iPad, so I don't, I don't know. There should be.
To get the gallery view, John, just on the left hand side, click on the very top. Just put your finger on the very top.
Nothing.
Nothing, wow.
I mean, I, I still have in my picture, the waiting with the, the wheel going around. It's right over my face. Maybe I'll get that, try to get, no, that's not moving.
You know what I'd do? Try signing, go out and then come back in. Try that.
I clicked to join where it says iPad, iPhone or Android device. Okay, open this page in Zoom, open. And I came back, join meeting. What's Ira on? Twice? You logged in twice, Ira.
I don't know why. I have no clue why.
No problem.
Comes back.
Arthur, your name is, it's saying Michael Tucker.
I shared my link with them because he's, he needed the link, so I don't know what I did, Ashley, but I just shared the link.
With Tony's.
Are you, Michael?
Yeah.
As long as you hear me, that's fine.
Okay.
I've got. So, um, ready to start the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Meeting of the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Bucilli is here, yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Here.
The quorum is present. First order of business is application O A 2001 Jose and Basilio Lara relative to 24 Newbury Street appealed the decision of the building inspector. I have communicated with Larry Simeoni. He was supposed to send me a letter withdrawing that application. The email has not come in. I recommend that we table this one more time.
Is the motion to table? Roll call.
About to continue, I'm sorry. Mr. Bucilli? This is the continuum, yes? Uh, yes, Mr. Bucilli. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is continued to the meeting of June 29th, if that's, we have no objections.
Can we take calendar item number 20-11 next?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the applica, A 2011 is the application of Post Road Realty LLC. 11 Agunkwa Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, requesting a variance. Uh, requesting extension, a six month extension of City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals variance A 1919 to enable the appellant to construct a 12 story, 236 residential unit apartment and associated amenities, including a coffee shop and exercise facility on lot two at 656 Ocean Avenue in Revere.
Hey, David, do you just want to explain the reason why?
I think that one wasn't mine. That might be Corey's.
Yes, yes, this is actually one of mine. I, projects like this, they, they are quite involved and quite detailed with different permits needed from the state. Also with this being on a state highway, I've been working closely to get some of those permits in place as well. It's just a timely process, time consuming process, and though the client is getting very close to pulling their building permit to activate this variance, just out of an abundance of caution, they have requested that we appear before you and request this, this extent. Otherwise, project is moving forward well and expect to have them in the ground very soon.
Yeah, are there any, what else was to speak?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue. I'm Director of Economic Development for the city of Revere. And I would stand in support of this extension. I think David Jacobowitz is here for virtually the same request for another project in Waterfront Square. I think in both cases, as Corey has indicated, these are complicated projects that take quite some time. They have been further delayed by the whole COVID virus issue, which has delayed some financing issues. I do believe also that they are probably told as a result of the COVID emergency declaration of the governor, but I believe that they are asking for an extension officially, just to support one that they already have administratively. We very much support that and we support your approval of both applications.
Hey.
Michael?
Yes?
In David's case, and I'm not sure if Corey also, David is requesting a six month extension of the variance beyond the date of the expiration of Governor Baker's state of emergency order. I'm not sure if Corey is asking for the same thing.
We don't, we don't think that's necessary in our case.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Ira Irnovasowski.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to make this official, this being in my ward, Ira Irnovasowski, 53 DeHonge Street, Ward Two Counselor. This is in my ward and along Ocean Avenue, and we have no objections to this extension. Thank you.
Okay.
I would also add that our support would extend to either version of the extension beyond the emergency order or within the emergency order, either are fine with us.
Okay, can we take a roll call?
One moment. Al, you still there?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the extension?
Question comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bucilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is granted.
David, what is your, the title of your company?
See Boston Development. It's 646, right down the street, 646 Ocean Ave.
It's the third item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
One moment. Okay, so that's 2007.
This is A 2007 B.C. Boston Development LLC, 141 Tremont Street, Third Floor, Boston. Requesting a six month extension of City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals variance A 1903 to enable the appellant to construct a seven story mixed use residential retail and restaurant use in the One Land Transit Oriented Development District at 646 Ocean Avenue, Revere. And we have, the members have also received the communication from David, and David is requesting a six month extension beyond the date of the expiration of Governor Baker's state of emergency order. Yeah?
That's correct. That's correct.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Do you want to take proponents and opponents?
Oh, I'm sorry, proponents. Ira?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Ira Irnovasowski, 53 DeHonge Street, Ward Two Counselor, the cell who is in my, in my ward, and we have no objection to this extension.
And Bob O'Brien, 10 Ocean Avenue, Director of Economic Development. I join with the counselor in support of this ZBA approval of this petition.
Okay, any other proponents? Hearing now, I'll close that side of hearing. Any opponents? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members was to speak? And I would ask that this go for a roll call.
Al, this is the proposal. It's 646 Ocean Avenue, requesting a six month extension.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
That's yes. Mr. Bucilli?
Yes.
Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ira and Bob, thanks very much. Take care and stay healthy, everybody.
Thank you.
Return to the regular order of business?
Yes, please.
Uh, the next application is application A 2003. This is the application of Randolph Taylor, 183 Cushman Avenue, Revere. Requesting front and side yard setback variances to enable the appellant to construct a 16 foot wide by 24 foot long garage with a second story addition of the proposed garage uh, and an existing family dwelling on Lot 14 at 183 Cushman Avenue. Is the proponent here? Is the applicant here? I did speak to the ward counselor who had a lengthy discussion with the gentleman. I believe that's why we requested the continuance so that he could have the opportunity to speak to the ward counselor who says he has no problem with this. I would ask if there's any other proponents? Hearing now, I'll close that side of hearing. Any opponents? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members was to speak?
John, we might as well take it right up and, and vote on it.
Okay. Okay, the, this is Randolph Taylor at on 183 Cushman Avenue requesting uh, front and side yard setbacks. How do you vote, Al?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bucilli votes yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Three, seven. The next application before the board is application A 20 oh eight. This is the application of Eastern Equity Partners LLC, 1040, 1048 North Shore, Revere. Requesting a variance of title 17, 1724, 1728, section 1724010, 1724010Q, 1728020 of the revised ordinance of City Revere, minimum lot size, frontage, side yard, rear yard, front yard setback, floor area ratio, parking, maximum height to enable the appellant to construct, and this is based on the original filing of a four story mixed use development, which has been now identified by the council for the appellant as a typo. So what is being requested is a five story mixed use development consisting of one commercial unit and 32 residential units on lot 77 at 207, 209 Shirley Avenue, Revere.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
My name is Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown, L.A., Fort Worth, Proctor Avenue, Revere. Uh, I represent the petitioner in this matter. Uh, I'm happy to kind of pose this as bringing the bagel bin back to Shirley Avenue. It's been a year since the fire there that removed kind of longstanding fixture of the neighborhood. And this is a proposal to get them back to this location.
I'm frozen here.
Building? Is everything going alright?
We can continue.
Okay.
Continue.
You're being seen, perfect.
A, a new five story mixed use building, so the bagel bin would be on the ground floor. And there are three levels above that, and then on the fifth level of the, of the structure, it is just two units that are from the edge of the property. You, you basically can't even see them. If, if at all possible, I, I'd be happy to share some renderings, but it doesn't look like I have that function here. These are micro units, to say at least they're approximately 450 square feet for the residential units. The, the studio apartments, just a good new building on this property that is solely being commercial, so not getting rid of, of any single family homes or really homes of long term residents, anything like that. It's bringing new mixed use investment to the city, keeping that commercial activation of the property. There are going to be 11 parking spaces in the back. In our conversations with the city, they would like to see these be specifically dedicated to the commercial use of the property and to basically have the residential units be restricted from having any cars to this property. This is something that the developer has utilized very effectively at his other properties. And where this is just steps away from the MBTA blue line. We have few doubts that, that a car is really necessary at this spot at all, and it is not what these properties are going to be marketed for. We ask that you support these projects. This project particularly, it's, it's been a burned out building, and I think the neighborhood and, and really everyone involved should be very happy to see be transformed and the bagel bin to come back to Shirley Avenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucker, there's, oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, one resident have, actually two residents have their hands raised. I don't know if they're proponents or opponents, though.
Alrighty, uh.
I'll allow them to speak.
Uh, first, a ward counselor, if it was to speak?
Chairman, at this point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, yield my time and let, let everybody else speak first and I'll speak afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor of the project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Bob.
We continue?
Yes.
My name is Robert O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue. And I'm Director of Economic, for the Economic Development for the city of Revere. And I stand in support of ZBA approval of the variances for this project. We have submitted a letter to the ZBA to that effect, which addressed all three of the Shirley Avenue projects, mixed use projects being proposed today. I can, if you wish, speak to all of them since the basic logic of our support applies equally to all three. If that's okay, it might be more efficient when we come to the other two, but I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
In that event, I, I would just say, first of all, that our position with regard to these variances is consistent with the positions we have taken on previous projects within recent months in Shirley Avenue that also applied for similar variances. To it, reduced setbacks, increased FAR, reduced parking in particular. I would say that the reason that we supported the other projects' variances as this one is the only way that we can get kind of mixed use development on Shirley Avenue that the city and others desire is to have relaxation from current zoning. The current zoning has gotten us what we have had in the past, which is virtually no private development on Shirley Avenue. So the only mechanism unless and until the zoning is changed, which is being considered by the city now, but unless and until that happens, the only way we will get private development on Shirley Avenue is to allow these types of variances. I think the city has devoted a great deal of time in my early years in this project, in this position, I should say, and before in investing a lot of public funds in the improvement of the project that was done in concert with our partners in the not for profit community, particularly the neighborhood developers. And with the support of public funding through the transformative neighborhood initiative as well as Mass Works. The goal in part of that investment and that investment of time was to encourage private development in Shirley Avenue. That began to happen with the redevelopment of the synagogue site, which we owe a debt of gratitude to our ward counselor, who was a leader in that regard. But after that was done, there was other private development that was allowed to happen because of variances granted previously. This is a continuation trend, and I think the trend toward private development in the Shirley Avenue district and in Revere generally is a very positive one. I think the type of development that is being allowed here is a mix of uses, which preserves the commercial character, particularly of the early few blocks of Shirley Avenue, and also adds residential development above that. All of these projects would not be allowed where they are not for a relaxation of the parking requirements, because parking at the ground floor level would displace precisely the kind of revitalized commercial spaces that these projects are providing and that otherwise would not be possible. So we think it is justified in this case and in other cases in Shirley Avenue, because it's the only way we can get what we all want to have happen in terms of increased mixed use development. The real issue in this case, or, well, there are two, actually. There is no variance being requested for height. Nonetheless, the ward counselor and others have longstanding concerns about too much height on Shirley Avenue. And to that, for that reason, the developer has proposed a significant setback on the project now under consideration at 207, so that virtually the fifth floor is not visible from the street. And in the case of the other project that is being built close to or at the allowed height of 50 feet, it is designed with a a cornice line at the fourth floor level and a setback in terms of a mansard roof, which blends away from that, again, reducing its visibility from the street. Those do not involve the need for any variances since they're within the allowable height, but they are meant to mitigate the effect of that height at the street level. What is required and is being asked for here is significant reduction of the parking requirements, particularly for the residential units. In fact, for all practical purposes, with the exception of some residential spaces being devoted to shared use vehicles, there will be no individual parking on site for any of them. We are confident that this developer can and will keep the commitment that there be no residential parking for any of these projects. In the first place, I think this is a quintessentially transit oriented development area, well served, obviously, by the green line, which is practically adjacent to this site and also to the site at 194, but it's also well served by local bus lines. It will be the site of Blue Bike stations that are being now introduced in Revere. It is generally pedestrian access to a number of other sites in the area. So we think it is exceptionally well served in terms of a transit oriented development site. We would also add that most of the units that are being proposed are studio apartments. Of the 95 new residential units that will be created, 91 are studio units, which tend to have poor automobile ownership profiles in, in any event. But perhaps most importantly, the developer in this case has made the unequivocal commitment, which should be part of any zoning board of approval of the zoning requirement, that no units will be leased to people who own vehicles. I might add that the developer has made a similar commitment in other projects elsewhere in the city that has been reviewed and approved by the zoning board of appeals with the support of the city administration. This developer is, I think, capable of making and standing behind that commitment, and with that combination, I think instead of being a problem, the lack of resident parking actually contributes to the solution, because it will not bring vehicles into the neighborhood that have no place to go. Indeed, it will not bring vehicles into the community at all, which we think is very preferable. Finally, we would say, although this is not an issue that relates directly to the jurisdiction of the ZBA, this is, these are very timely projects in terms of the municipal finances of the city, and they will provide between them in excess of 400 provide between them in excess of $450,000 of fees and permits in addition to increased property taxes, and over $200,000 of that will be in contributions to the Community Investment Trust Fund, which will be devoted to community improvements within the Ward Two environment. And Councilor Novasceski has been very effective at spending similar funds and similar projects, and I think that can make a great contribution to the vitality of Shirley Avenue District. For all of these reasons, we support your approval of the variances for this property and for the other two that are being heard today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
We have, Michael, we have a letter to the record from David Massey, 9 Dehone Street, in support of this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing, any opponents?
Mr. Tucker, there's three attendees that have their hands raised. Would you like me to allow them to talk? I do not, I can't tell if they're proponents or opponents until we let them speak.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just, I'm just gonna go in order as they appear on my participants list. First one is Laura Holmes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lor Holmes, that's L-O-R Holmes. I live at 243 Campbell Ave since 2006. This is the first time I've participated in a ZBA meeting. It's very interesting to learn about all these projects. Another hat that I wear, besides being a concerned community resident, is I have a background in both housing development and commercial development. I take a great interest in seeing all the activity that is coming to Shirley Ave and our community, and I think that a lot of really good, a lot of things come from all that. I also share the sentiment that the city is looking for all the resources it can get right now, and there's lots of good community uses to be had for them. I don't know whether I'm a proponent or an opponent for these projects, and the reason is because I only just heard about them maybe two weeks ago, a week or two ago. And what concerns me about it, my question is more of a concern about process. I was involved in development work in the City of Boston and the City of Chelsea for many, many, many years. And when a developer was coming into a community, there were always multiple opportunities for the community to meet the developers, hear what the plans are, have some give and take, have questions answered. And unless I've been really under more of a rock than quarantine had put me, I don't think there's been that kind of process here, and I don't know how that generally works in Revere, so that would be part A, and I'll just ask my question and then I can be muted again and you guys can respond. If we could have some, a couple of meetings with concerned people from the community, I think it'd be great just to hear more, learn more about the projects, get a chance to ask questions, for example, about the parking. And, you know, I appreciate that it's a transit centered design. I know that that's what's happening right now, and that's all the rage. I understand there's some evidence on agreeing not to rent to people, but I'm wondering, does that prevent anybody from getting a car after they, after they move into the property? Just questions about in general, what is the impact on the community besides bringing some money into the Community Trust Fund, which is great. I don't know who administers that or how decisions get made about that either, but I would just like to advocate for a little bit more community participation and a chance for residents to learn more about all these projects before approve variances for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, the next person that raised their hand?
Sure, the next one, the name on it is listed as Hansi. I'm going to allow this person to speak, allowed to talk.
Is there an address for Hansi?
She hasn't spoken yet.
Is that just one name, H-A-N-Z-I?
H-A-N-S-I. Hansi, you're available to speak if you'd like to speak as a proponent or an opponent.
He's one of the owners of the Bagel Bin, guys.
Thank you, I will, does he want to speak? Is a hands raised, so I can't tell.
Hansi, speak up. Here he is.
I hear a vague hello.
Yeah, I can't.
Can we take the next person or maybe he can get better?
Next person, I'm gonna mute Hansi. Next person is Deborah Bocchetti.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Deborah Bocchetti and my husband, Michael, we own One Or Square, right next to the Bagel Bin, and we've been longtime owners of that building for nearly 30 years. We've seen, you know, Revere, Shirley Avenue, you know, slowly try to creep upwards, and we're very thrilled to see this project being proposed for the Bagel Bin and further down Shirley Avenue. And we have absolutely no objections. We think it's going to be a very positive change for Shirley Ave and the entire neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So I'll put this down as a proponent.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Anne Steinman, I'm going to allow to talk. Okay.
Hi, I live at 45 Thornton Street. Let's make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is not the Thornton Street project, I don't think.
No, but, no, but I live in, I'm still a member of Revere. I'm still a member of the community, I still.
Okay, if you wish to speak for this project, you have the right to, but we just wanted to make sure that you knew where we were on the calendar.
Yes, I do know that you're with the old Bagel Bin is, I mean, I am happy that something's being done to bring the Bagel Bin back, but I do have a, I do have a concern about the studio apartments. It's my understanding that, or I can ask a question, that are any of them being allowed for low income residents? It's my understanding that none of the business were allowed for low income. And especially with the, you know, the crisis going on right now with COVID and everything. If they have more people in the neighborhood, I don't want, I don't want to bring in just, you know, affluent people. I think maybe some, something for people who are not as well off. And also, I wish there would have been more time for all three of these properties to put a community to hear about and to get involved and to have questions asked. And I also like to reiterate the concern that one of the people before me has spoken about what happens when you get a vehicle or motorcycle. How's it gonna be enforced? Are they gonna still be able to live there? What's gonna happen? You know, because parking is, it's a very congested area on Shirley Ave. And, you know, the parking situation is going to affect everybody. So. Any, any answer?
We'll continue on with the proponents and opponents, and then if the applicant wishes to speak, then they do so. So is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, Mr. Tucker. Hansi, Desi has his hand raised again. He's, he's in as a different name, so let's see if this works.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Hansi Vladesci. I live at 69 Elm Street in Malden. I'm here with my father, George Vladesci. A lot of people might not, might know who we are. We run the Bagel Bin Deli. We, the rebuilding process that we promised a year ago after the fire is actually happening right now, and Jamie's actually helping us out to do this. We're getting hundreds of messages from Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, stating when we can come back, and so I just want to let everybody know that we are trying very hard to come back to Revere, and we miss the town a lot. We have a current store in Toffsfield. If you haven't come, if you haven't seen it, please come down, check it out. For those who might not know who we are, my father owned the business for 20 years, the Bagel Bin, the burned out building that is on the end of Shirley Ave right now. He made it an icon on that street, and we've had presidential candidates come there and governors and senators. And just the reason why was because my father had an understanding of what hospitality was, was to bring a community together and to treat everybody like a family. And he always taught me that hard work and success would lead to, a lot of hard work would lead to success. Another person who does work very hard, and I saw this with my own eyes, was Jamie. He would be there at 5:00 AM, and I would serve him the first coffee over there, so I know he works hard. And so that's why we are proponents of this project, because we know Jamie has done amazing work in this community already. And we've seen the community change in just a few months. Regarding the parking, in my perspective, this will not be an issue because the T station is so close and so many ride sharing apps now are used, so I don't believe that would be a problem. I, we've seen it in our store, like a lot of people are getting Uber Eats, and it's been very popular right now, so that means a lot of people that are traveling to the store, they want somebody to pick it up and deliver it to them at their house. So this just shows me that ride sharing apps are gonna be used more often in the future. So without, with that being said, we have total faith in Jamie to do an amazing job here. Hopefully, we can do this as quick as possible, so we can serve some amazing food to the have.
Hey, thank you very much. Ashley, is there anyone else that has their hand raised?
Yes, there's a Ronald B. Hogan. I'm going to allow him to speak now.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Ron Hogan. I'm the property owner of 173 Shirley Ave, which is a laundromat located across the street from the old St. Jean Credit Union. So I'm, I'm on to speak in, in support of the proposal for both the side of the Bagel Bin and I know later in the agenda, the, the one of the old, the old credit union. I've owned the property on Shirley Ave for about 10 years, and and over the course of the 10 years, the first seven or eight years, I didn't see a whole lot of interest from anybody wanting to invest money in Shirley Ave. I took a chance, I spent a lot of money on my property, and I'm really pleased to see folks willing to put the kind of money into developing on Shirley Ave that, that Mr. Russo appears to be willing to do. I met Mr. Russo when I got notification that he was planning on building.
For those who are not participating, please silence, please put your microphone on silence. Okay, sorry about that. You may continue.
So I met Mr. Russo when I got notification that he was planning on building on the empty parking lot next to my store, and I had some concerns. I, through the ward council, was put in contact with Mr. Russo, and and I gotta tell you, he was completely responsive to the things that, that I had concerns about, even though he had already been granted the variances that he needed to, to go ahead and do the building. He was willing to, to make some changes, to work with me on some of the things that I had. So, you know, I tell you that it's, it's easy when things are good to lose sight of the fact that there aren't a lot of developers willing to to put the kind of money that it takes to develop today into projects. I, I do, you know, I do have a lot of faith in the fact that these micro units do not put the type of pressure on parking, and I guess you should realize that as a property owner there, if I were concerned about parking, I'd be on the other side of this issue telling you, because quite frankly, my business relies upon it. And I think the key to both proposals is the fact that these appeal to a market at 400 square feet a unit that really is not, are not folks that are gonna put pressure on parking in the area. So I'm speaking in support for both projects that are before you today.
Thank you. Are there any of them else that raise their hand? Doc Cohen, want to speak in favor? Ashley, is there anyone else that's?
Not on the, not on the attendees list. There appears to be a couple of counselors, and I don't, and and a woman that's listed as Ira. Has her hand raised?
Jan Dumas.
Okay, so I will.
Also Jeff Cohen is up in the upper right. Dr. Cohen.
Yes, hello. Anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually here for the 180 Shirley Ave. I think it's a little, a little bit, but I suppose I could talk now.
Well, let's talk about the project that's on the calendar right now, so.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Thank you very much.
I want to hear about, I want to talk about that project. Thank you very much, Ira.
Who was there speaking?
Huh?
Name and address for the record, please.
Jan Dumas, 51 Walllet Avenue. Sorry, I keep forgetting, not everyone knows me. I'm very concerned about this property. I don't have as much faith as the rest of you that no one will bring a car. I'm also concerned, since we don't have an Airbnb policy in the city, how many of these units are gonna be rented by people hoping to turn them into a second income by renting them to people who are only gonna be here for a short period of time? And are you truly talking about renting to people who specifically are only going to be here for a year or two? I've been in this neighborhood for over a decade, and I would like to surround myself with people who want to make the Shirley Avenue neighborhood their permanent home, not a place to just throw a suitcase for a couple of months. I don't think that's good for the neighborhood. And I don't want to lose the beauty and multiculturalism that is the Shirley Avenue neighborhood by filling it with a bunch of short term rentals for people who aren't gonna love the neighborhood the way I do. I don't want to lose that beauty. I don't want it to become sort of just a rubber stamp of any other neighborhood or a place where people are, say, only staying until they finish college or only staying for a few months as a vacation. I'm really worried about those things and, and I don't know. Make me comfortable somehow, but right now I'm not at all comfortable with any studio apartments that are going to be for transient rentals.
Okay, thank you for speaking. And the next person that wishes to speak on the project?
Anybody else but two?
Is there anyone else that wished to speak on the project?
I guess now it's me, Mr. Chairman, if nobody else.
Okay, no, it's not just you. It's also Tony Zambiro.
Oh, okay. No, I'll let you go, Counselor. I'll yield.
Okay, thank you. So I don't often come to speak before Board of Appeals meetings, although I am the zoning chairman of the City Council Subcommittee. I'm thrilled to come here to speak tonight on the revitalization of Shirley Ave. Can everybody hear me? I know I'm having some internet connection trouble.
You're fine, Tony.
Oh, great, because it's telling me that I've got a unstable connection. I apologize. So, a few things. Obviously, I'm here to speak in favor, in favor of the Bagel Bin. Certainly, certainly an institution for the city, and I, I think I helped bring some of the some of the high profile people like Scott Brown, the governor, John McCain, many, many people come, came to the Bagel Bin. More importantly, in the realm of revitalization of Shirley Ave, I don't think any developer has done more, not just for the revitalization of Shirley Ave, but neighborhoods all across the city than Jamie Russo. He has a track record. That's what I stand behind. I stand behind track records. I watch what developers do. So to get me to speak in favor of that, I know obviously the administration's in favor of it, because this is the revitalization of Revere. And Shirley Ave has been a big part of it. Now, I know there's, there's a little slight concern about the height. I don't, I don't share that concern, but nevertheless, I, I can appreciate other people's concerns. When we get to parking, there is no more of a transit oriented development than this project right here. You can throw, it's, it's steps away from the blue line, steps away from public transportation. The certain essence of transit oriented development. The certain essence of transit-oriented development. I've been around long enough to remember when it was kicked off. And transit-oriented development was kicked off at Revere Beach, for those of you who were around back those days. With a former governor, who I don't want to mention because I just don't, I don't have anything good to say. But bottom line is that was a good, that was a good thing, transit-oriented development. And I'll just point to the Holm Street project and what that did to that disgusting lot on the corner there and how that turned it into a magnificent building. And the main reason was because it was it was steps away from a steps away from a train station. And that's how you get, that's how you, that's how you create a neighborhood like this. And there are certain things that you have to do in order to have developers like this invest so much money. You have to allow them to make enough money to fund the project and come out of it not in the hole. Sometimes that means that we have to bend a little bit. In this project, I don't see any real concerns. Of course, the parking is what it is. These are small units and they're not going to require, and you've got to treat it as transit-oriented development. And you're bringing a business back that is truly, you know, an icon for the community. And we all want the Bagel Bin back on Shirley Ave. And we want a vibrant Shirley Ave., which we have coming with all these fantastic projects. And the great Veterans Building was a big asset to the, to the community. And I think that was the same height as we're talking here. Nevertheless, the point is that I have to back a developer that has a proven track record, does what he says he's going to do, and makes neighborhoods better. And so I am as strong a proponent as anyone could possibly be for this project. Thank you.
Michael, you got a young lady who wants to speak.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record. You have to take the mic off. You're on mute. There you go.
Hi, my name is Fatu Drami. I live on 30 Path Avenue, Revere.
What was that?
30 Path Avenue. Got it? I am not speaking for or against this project. I'm not against it. I know that we have housing demand in Revere and that it's nice to see a developer trying to fill those needs. But I also wanted, my concern is, has to deal with some of the concerns that residents of Shirley Ave. are concerned about. Basically, we know that these apartments were basically filled the demand for housing in the city. But we also know that Revere demographic, most of the people that live in Revere would not be able to afford these apartments. So that is one thing. So I think that we, going forward in the future, we have to basically try to balance the demand and the supply and the benefits to the community. So I am grateful that I had informed us about what is going on. We all know that these projects are going on, but I would like to appeal to the zoning committee that for future projects like this, that residents that live in those neighborhoods or even Revere residents need to be aware of these projects at the initial submission of this project so that people can have their voices and their concerns heard and that they can also advocate for things that will benefit the community. So that is just something that I would like to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I guess it's me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's two other hands. Sorry, there's two other hands that just raised. Kristin Janjar is next.
Let her go.
Mr. Chairman, can we discern if these people are speaking as proponents or opponents?
Okay, I mean, both of those did not declare what they were, but.
I have a section referred to now as unknown position.
Okay.
Hi, this is Kristin Janjar. Can you hear me? Hi. I live over at 67 Campbell Ave.
What's the name?
And I would, Kristin Janjar, J A N J A R. I would consider myself an opponent to this. However, I'm not an opponent to the Bagel Bin itself. I love the Bagel Bin and I would love to have them back. But I'm not sure that we need four stories above the Bagel Bin just to get the Bagel Bin back. I do, first of all, want to make sure that we address the idea that there's just slight concerns or no real concerns that's being stated by Mr. Zambudo. I don't appreciate that these are just not real concerns because they're not his concerns. But anyway, I think there are concerns about this and other developments. I think there are three of them on the agenda tonight that are all in the Shirley Ave. neighborhood. Yes, you can rent to somebody that doesn't own a vehicle, but it doesn't mean that they don't have friends and family there or even people living with them that all have vehicles. And that's just more cars that are congesting the neighborhood. Yes, there was definitely work to revitalize this neighborhood that TND was part of. I'm on the TND board. But that was also in conjunction with affordable housing, which I think has been mentioned. And I appreciate that Mr. Russo is interested in developing a whole bunch of things in our neighborhood, but I don't know that he's even come close to developing anything that is affordable housing for anybody who currently lives in the neighborhood, as Fatu just talked about. So I think that we need to think about that. Also, I worry that sort of we're losing the soul of our neighborhood. We're losing green space. We don't have the investment in infrastructure that I think we could really use. I know that these properties, when they're built, some funding goes into some neighborhood funds. But I'm not sure that those get spent necessarily the way we would want them to be. And I'm not sure that that is really enough to make the neighborhood as good as it could be. And I worry about that. I don't think we need, you know, 10 five-story buildings within a three-block period where we're at one or two stories for most of that area right now. And I worry about all the variances to zoning. Clearly, that's what you guys do, but like Mr. O'Brien mentioned, right now this area is zoned in a particular way and we don't change the zoning. We just keep accepting all these variances to zoning, which to me seems a little strange. So it seems like we should change the zoning if that's the case. But again, that would seem to me a need for a bigger conversation with more people in the neighborhood. So yes, I appreciate revitalization, but I'm not sure that it means five stories of really expensive small apartments, which are eventually going to bring a lot of people, a lot of cars, maybe people that aren't invested in the neighborhood and not much else to the neighborhood. I'd love to have the Bagel Bin back anytime. That'd be great. Thanks.
Could I get your address one more time?
67 Campbell Avenue. That's where we live. But we also own property at 70 Thornton Street, so I'm here for both discussions today.
Thank you.
No other? No, Mr. Tucker.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ward Council.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you, you and the board members and all the folks that are on. It's great to see such a community gathering here on Zoom. But just, I want to just fill a few issues that people brought up. We did not have a community meeting, which I met with the legal folks about three weeks ago. And we did plan on having one, but because of the COVID, we could not meet together. So my alternate plan was to send out emails to all my constituents in the neighborhood, which I did. About 125 went out and I got about 30 different comments now. So that's why, just so you know, that's why we didn't have a actual community meeting. So to mention TOD now, realize we have a transit-oriented development down on Ocean Avenue. Shirley Ave. actually is not a TOD. It's just adjacent to it. You know, so they're trying to tie everything in together, which I have no problem with. I've been very pro developments for the last 10 years that we've started to build all these projects around the neighborhood. And many of the projects are in Ward Two, Shaw's Ocean Ave. on one side of Ocean Ave. The south side of Ocean Ave. is Ward One, so that's not, you know, my ward. One of the key issues that everybody I heard from, and just so you know, Mr. Tucker, emailed comments of concerns to 13 different emails I sent to your revere.org and your private Comcast site early this afternoon. So these folks had a large concern of the parking. And everybody I've spoken to and even some of the night, parking, parking, parking. Now, just to clarify, the Bagel Bin, that's number one where we are, 11 spaces, 32 units. My only concern there was the heights. Now, height is not part of the variance that we're looking for today because they're just about meeting the minimum height of 50 feet with that one half a floor that they have on the fourth floor. I have no problem with that. And I tried to work with Jamie Russo and he was not very cooperative in that issue to remove that fifth floor. So with that, here I am. It's on the proponent side, but I'm just giving you my concerns. And of course, we do want to see the Bagel Bin back. And everybody's very supportive of them to come back. So with that, that's my piece for the Bagel Bin. So I'll talk the other two issues as they come up, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, I got nothing on my emails. So if you want to forward them to me, to the revere.org, that'd be great because I don't have the Comcast working, but the revere.org is an active email.
Right, I know that. It's probably in cyber heaven right now because I know that change in the whole service system is revere.org, so we'll get them to you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wish to speak? Hearing none, any members?
I'm sorry, Ralph DeChico just raised his hand.
Okay.
Proponent or opponent?
Ralph, please state your name and address for the record and state if you're a proponent or opponent.
Proponent. I'm for it. Just two points. One point for you, Mr. Tucker, the email server is having some problems because of the transforming today. Secondly, one point that I wanted to make that I believe might put some people at ease because it's a transit-oriented thing, none of these buildings are going to, because of the resident parking, none of these are going to be able to get resident parking stickers. So that should be, that should be something that should be pointed out. So these people are going to be rented apartments, so that's going to be at ease. If anybody has a vehicle, they're not going to be able to get a resident parking sticker for their vehicle. So they're not going to be able to have overnight parking. So that's one thing that should be pointed out. And they will not also, also will not be able to have visitor stickers, placards for those.
Will they sell?
So that's what I just.
Probably still there? Okay.
That should, that should put some vehicles coming into the area. So that's, that's one thing that I just wanted to point out.
Mr. Tucker, if I may, if I may, two more items I forgot to mention. Fatu mentioned affordable housing. Unfortunately, we cannot make these developers put in affordable housing. We have to get someone that gets a lot of grants and these people are doing all private funding. So unfortunately, we will not be able to get these developers to put in affordable housing. I know TND does it. They're doing it down on Revere Street. They'll be doing it at Suffolk Downs. And I know they did it at 525 Beach Street and also One Beach Street. So that's the affordable housing. Someone mentioned water and gas. Shirley Ave. has renew water lines, renew gas lines. And it shouldn't be a problem as far as the size of the buildings handling the water pipes. And I want to thank Mr. DeChico for mentioning because of the parking stickers. These folks in any of these new buildings will not be able to get parking stickers or visitor permits to go and park in the local neighborhood. So and it's been guaranteed by the developer, by Mr. Russo, that it will be in the lease, that no cars will be allowed by any of the folks living there.
That's right.
They have cars in their leases. So that kind of protects that to a point. I don't know what's going to happen if he ever sells the building, but and I don't know what we can put it in as a permanent restriction. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
We do make it a permanent restriction on with the.
I'll take care of it. Don't worry.
That's how it.
Yeah, W will take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, I wish I could mute microphones, Ashley, but you don't let me.
I apologize. I did. I made you a host.
Oh, I couldn't mute microphones because I would have been muting people for a while. It don't let me.
You can also see the participants list and you can see the hands raised as well, Mr. Tucker. We have Vanny.
I do see one now. Yes, I did notice that. Jan Dumas?
We already had that.
There's a resident named Vanny that has a hand raised.
Yeah, I don't see that one.
That's on the attendees list. You can toggle between attendees and panelists.
Oh, okay. Yes, I can. I just learned that now. Okay.
All right. If you can see that, I actually have to leave. I didn't realize this meeting was going to be so long. But if you can see the hands, that's how you know who needs to, who wants to speak. And you can just unmute them. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. Good luck, guys. And no, does any panelist need to share any screens at all? No, I'll set it up for screen sharing anyways.
Yeah, I could. I do have some renderings I could share.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to remind you how fragile our quorum is. I would suggest that we move as expeditiously as possible. Okay, is there anyone else that wish to speak right now? Just state your name and address for the record.
Vanny?
If you click on, if you highlight the name, you can click allow to talk.
I did that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Vanny Huat. I am a resident of Revere at 44 Dehaun Street. And I'm speaking with a heavy heart because I didn't plan on speaking. So I wanted to make a statement rather than to take a position. I'd like to appeal to the zoning board members that we are in the midst of a pandemic. The Shirley Ave. neighborhood and Ward Two specifically, the Shirley Ave. neighborhood has seen immense support by the city in the recent infrastructure improvement. We're seeing some developments by Jamie that's happening in the neighborhood. That's much-needed housing stock for the city of Revere as a whole. But I'm asking you, board members to, can you hear me?
Tell me if you're having problems that you might have to leave or anything like that. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to please consider postponing, making a decision on the request for variances or relief until we have a better handle on the city's preparation and community around what's happening with the pandemic. Many of us are parents who are trying to figure out what's the next step for school and how to put their kids in school safely. Many of us are still working through the pandemic. So we're, we're living through a lot of hard times. And I think we are entertaining a question right now that isn't priority. Housing crisis is real. Folks are going to deal with displacement shortly after the restrictions on not having to pay rent right away is lifted. So I'm just trying to appeal to humanity. I'm not making for or against. I'd love for the Bagel Bin to come back. I appreciate smart growth development. And I stand for community and would ask that you consider that as we are in a pandemic and a housing crisis that we postpone on making a decision on the three proposals that are related to the Shirley Ave. neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wish to speak? Vanny, do you wish to speak?
I just did.
He's unmuted, so if he wishes to speak, he may state his name and address for the record. Otherwise, we will move on to the next calendar item number.
Michael, Vanny just spoke.
We don't hear him here.
No, it was the, the, there was the young lady who just spoke.
You just spoke up, Michael.
Okay. All right, we can go on to the next calendar item number then.
I believe you may have to unmute John Henry.
If I can find him, yeah.
John, go ahead. Mr. Bichilli has made a motion that we take this matter up at this time.
If he would like to, what's the wish of the other members? I would like to continue on and do all three at the, so that we, but whatever your wishes. John, either you.
Do you wish to go to a roll call?
John or Arthur, do you want to go to a roll call?
Yes. Uh, we could do it now or we could do it later, it doesn't matter.
I would wish to, I'd like to see the other two and then go to a roll call.
Okay. They're going to take the other matters and not go to a roll call at this time. All right?
Yep. That's fine.
The next matter before the board is application A 2009. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is the application of EB Ventures LLC, 1040, 1048 North Shore Road. Unit B two, Revere, Mass, requesting minimum lot size, front yard setback, side yard, rear yard, lot frontage, buffer zone, screening, parking and maximum floor area ratio to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure, construct a three-story, 18 microunit apartment on Lot 123 on the corner of Shirley Avenue and Thornton Street at 57 Shirley Avenue, Revere.
Ira, do you wish to speak now or should I ask for proponents?
I'll wait till everybody speaks, thank you.
Are there any proponents?
Mr. Chairman, that's Bob O'Brien, 10 Ocean Avenue in Revere. I'm Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere. And I speak in favor of the variances for approval of variances for this project, as I did for the other, for essentially the same reasons.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak or I can go on with proponents?
I thi- I think you can go on, uh, to other proponents and it's the petition.
Any other proponents?
Very similar to the other projects. Thank you.
Any other proponents? I have.
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter to the record from David Massey, who has a property at nine to Home Street in favor of this project.
Okay, um, Anne, if you wish to speak, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Anne Steiman. I, I um, live at 45 Thornton Street and I managed, and I'm, I'm the property manager for the property at 111 Thornton Street. And in, um, I'm, I'm speaking against.
All right, ma'am, we're in proponents right now, so I'll just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No wait?
I'll gladly wait.
No problem. Laurel? The next person is Laurel Holmes. If you're a proponent.
Yes, I'm, and speaking as neither a, a proponent or an o- opponent, I'm in the.
Chairman. Yes, this is getting particularly difficult because we have no, no provisions in our.
We don't. Do you have to be a proponent or an opponent?
All right, then I'll go on the record as a no opponent in that.
Okay, so just let me continue on with the hearing and I'll ask if there's any more proponents. Hearing now closed. I see Anthony Zambudo. Tony, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for all the same reasons I spoke before, but mostly because this is all part of the revitalization and I, I've said enough about the quality of the developer and uh, the track record. So that's what the, that's what makes me a complete proponent.
Okay, thank you. Now, any other proponents? Hearing now closed, that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Please raise your hand or. Okay, Laurel, you may speak. State your name and address for the record, please.
Laurel Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue. And I'll be brief too, for the same reasons. I would like to put a hold on awarding variances for this project. I support the goals of revitalizing Shirley Avenue. I know it to be a vital neighborhood and has been for as long as I've lived there in many, many ways. There's beautiful homes, there are residents who have lived there for generations. These are things that we want to make sure that we preserve. Uh, we've worked for this decade, the year before to get uh, green space, play space for the kids, things that add to the quality of life. And I just want to know that, that, you know, among developers who are putting 95 units into the neighborhood, I want to have a chance to talk with them and see how the community, how the community will benefit from the development. I hope that this board uh, uh, of that five or six members, I hope this board will not rush to decisions about this without consideration for people in the community. There has a lot of support for the bagel bin, but I heard maybe 50/50 for the, for the support and uh, it seems to me as though in the, the, the rush to develop the community, which I'm all for the development, I'm just not for the rush part because I, all I see involved in the process so far is the developers, the other business owners.
I'm not trying to cut, I'm, I want to cut your shot because we're running out of time here. So um, I, you've stated out, what you're mostly stating now, you've stated in the last conversation with the other one. So if you could speed it up, I'd appreciate it.
Well.
Hello?
Yes, you muted me after you said I could.
I, I didn't mean to at all.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate everybody's time. I'm going to stay and say the same thing on the next development because I think it's important that it goes on the record that there are people who are neighborhood residents and it's a voice that seems to be missing from the process.
Thank you very much for speaking. Um, I believe the next person would be Anne.
I, um, don't need to restate my uh, address again?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, okay, this, um, name's Anne Steiman. I live at 111 Thornton Street and on a, I mean, I live at 40, excuse me, correction, I live at 45 Thornton Street. And I'm the property manager for 111 Thornton Street and um, parking is a big concern. In my particular area, we don't have parking permits for visitors or for residents. And for any of these properties, when you have more people coming in, either as visitors, guests, customers, um, if they cannot park in a, a parking, in a place we have a parking permit, the overflow is going to go on Thornton Street and other streets that are not, that don't have any parking restrictions as such. Um, secondly, I, I, again, I want to have, I think the community deserves and is only fair, especially the COVID crisis, to have a hearing so we can, so we can feel at ease. Right now, I'm hearing from residents, we don't feel comfortable with this. As yet, much as we'd like to have the bagel bin come back, um, and we're not talking about the bagel bin right now. I haven't gotten warm fuzzies yet from, from this discussion. I think our questions need, I think our concerns need to be addressed, need to be answered. Um, and, and thirdly, I'll reiterate, because it's, it's no guaranteed that you can provide housing for people of low income. That's excluding many, many, many people who are residents of Revere from being able to afford these, these housings. So you're changing the flavor, the nature, the spirit, the, the thing that makes Revere great is, is being changed. And I don't want to see anything be lost in the development. I'm, I'm all for commercial things, but I'm not in favor of the, um, these, these little small temporary housing units.
Okay, thank you. Point well taken. Unfortunately, we as the zoning board of appeals have nothing to do with the low income housing and can't make any votes on that. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, Ira?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I missed the proponent part. Um, but I, it's mine's on the proponent side, but with uh, concerns, this is at the corner of uh, Thornton Street and Shirley Ave. And right now, there's a two-family house there and they want to turn this into a three-story, 18-unit facility with four parking spaces. Uh, but let me say in advance of that, people were concerned about Airbnb. City Council currently is investigating and writing an ordinance to control Airbnbs. And one of them is, in order to have an Airbnb, a person has to live in the facility. That would be one of the requirements. So they just kind of turned the 18 units into Airbnb. And uh, my, for the parking is an issue, uh, but uh, again, the uh, developer will have in his leases, uh, no cars. And uh, as far as Anne Steiman is concerned, we will work on permit parking for Thornton Street to make that happen over the next couple of months and try and protect you as much as possible. So um, that's him, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, any other proponents? Any other opponents? Hearing now will close that side of the hearing. Next calendar item number, please.
I, I raised my hand, Chairman Tucker.
Which, who is this, please?
My name is Vanny. I, I raised my hand. I apologize. I thought you were going by hand. Um, I just wanted, Vanny from 44 Dehaan Street, um, and with a heavy heart, I'm opposed to this project for reasons I said before, indefinitely for an open community process and consideration of the reduced quality of life we've been, we're experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see any. I have to, I'll shut off the hand raising so I don't get confused with the next one, but uh, uh, take down your hands without. Okay, so the next calendar item number, please.
The next item is calendar item A 2010. This is the application of Shirley Ventures LLC, 1040, 1048 North Shore Road. Revere requesting minimum lot size, front yard setback, side yard, rear yard, frontage, parking, floor area ratio, buffer zone, screening and maximum height to enable the appellant to reconstruct the existing structure, St. Jean's Credit Union and adjoining property and construct a five-story mixed-use building consisting of two commercial units and 45 microunit apartments on lots A and two at 180 and 184 and 186 Shirley Avenue in Revere.
Or do you wish to speak or I can go proponents?
Uh, I believe you can go proponents. We'll, we'll.
Are there any proponents?
Comments over.
Jeff? I see one hand raised and um, Jeff, you can go.
Mr. Chairman, let me just go on the record first.
I'm sorry, Bob, I. Go ahead, Bob.
For reasons previously expressed, this is Bob O'Brien, 10 Ocean Avenue, Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere. For reasons previously expressed and, and further detailed in our letter of support, we would recommend and request ZBA approval of these variances. I might make one specific note with regard to both of these two projects. The character of Shirley Avenue is defined by a lot of things, but among the most important is what happens at the street level. And one of the reasons that we are so supportive of these projects is that the mix of uses include vital commercial development at the street level. In this building even more so than uh, it was before and certainly including the bagel bin. So that mix, I think, and particularly the predilection of this particular developer to get the right kind of commercial uses for this neighborhood are the reasons why we have confidence that he will do precisely that.
Thank you. I see Tony, you have your hand raised? Tony, you wish to speak?
I do, and, and, and I'll be very quick, obviously. Uh, for all the reasons I stated before and for the, for what this will do to the neighborhood and uh, some of us remember uh, the building across the street that was on the corner. There was a problem for, as many years as I've been on the council, and this gentleman took it over and uh, and cleaned it up. And that's the kind of stuff that happens here. So Shirley Ave is turning into a, a really uh, nice place and, and uh, so that's why I'm in favor and I'm a proponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponent? Jeff, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. So, I mean, I, I agree completely with the other proponents that had just spoke. You know, we've had, my name's Jeff Cohen, I'm a podiatrist. I've had, we've had a business there for 60 years. I've been there 30 years, my wife and I, Carol. And, and 30 years ago, it wasn't nice there. It was really bad. I mean, you, you hear about things and, and now people are saying, no big deal, you know, everything's wonderful in Shirley Ave and, and we want to keep it wonderful, but for a long time, it was commonplace, gangs, drug abuse, prostitution, arson. That's what we lived with for years. It took 20 years. It's only in the last 10 years that things have really come around and people have been interested in this revitalization. Ira talked about it for a long time wonderfully and, and things have improved and they've improved a lot. And, and so what we're doing at this point is, as you may know, we sold the property, but we like the area. We, we like being there. And we've done well and we're keep, we're staying in the area. We've improved our office. It's going to be bigger. We're closing our Boston office. We're moving that into the Revere office. And um, I think as far as, as, as parking goes, I mean, it is an issue. But I find, I don't ever remember having a patient complain to me that they couldn't see me because of parking. Many times, people would complain because I didn't want to go to the Shirley Ave area. But never did someone come in and say, I couldn't find a parking spot. You know, I mean, who knows what it's going to be in the future, but so far, so good. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
That's my story.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak um, as a proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll pick up this segment for my.
I have two hands raised, Ira, that um, are sending Ener and Ro- Ronald. If you're not a um, let him go. Proponent. I'll, I'll unmute you, but just please state what you're. Um, you're both allowed to talk at this point. Ronald, are you a proponent?
Yes, I'm a proponent. Uh, I, I think I mentioned earlier and I'll be really brief because I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier, but I own the property at 173 Shirley Ave, directly across from the proposed development and, and a lot of what I said earlier applies to this same project. The only other thing I want to add, and it's to jump off of something that Mr. O'Brien said earlier, that the, the very street-level commercial development that you're hoping to achieve uh, quite frankly, needs some of this density in order to support them. And, and I know that that's something that's been successfully done in, in other urban areas. And so I, as a, as a business owner there, as much as I think everybody rightfully wants to make sure that you get the parking piece right. When you bring this type of transit-oriented development, you bring customers for a lot of those businesses that, let's face it, are going to rely upon that foot traffic and not the old vehicle traffic of 30 or 40 years ago. So again, I'm speaking in, in support and I just wanted to add that piece.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Um, yes, I do. Can you hear me?
And it, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Ina Tall and I live at 100B Florence Avenue. And uh, I am an opponent.
Nope, then we're drawing our proponents right this minute. That, so is there any other proponents? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent?
The chairman, I'll take it if nobody else has it.
Okay. Ira, you wish to speak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, this one is really, really a dense, dense location. I'm, I'm speaking on the proponent side because I, I'm still pro development. I just think this one is over, over the hill. Uh, I didn't want five stories with 45 units and zero parking. You know, I have a problem with that. Uh, I would like to see the area built up, but uh, this particular one being on a fifth, a fifth level and adding those extra nine spaces and squeezing in four additional spaces on the first floor behind the commercial spaces. Uh, I have a problem. I have a problem with that. And again, the developer wouldn't work with me on that. And I just, again, I'm for development, and I'm against this particular way it's built. So, and I'm talking on behalf also of approximately 50 other people. And here you have some of them online here today that are against this because of mainly the parking, even though the developer, again, and I'll state, has stated that he will put it in his lease that there will be no permit parking or visitor parking passes issued to that building. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other proponents? Hearing now will close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Is there any opponents? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead and speak. That's listed as Ira Novoselfsky on the screen, please. Anne, one moment, please.
Hi, Jan Dumas, 50 Walnut Avenue. I'm concerned that it's just too big a building for that corner. I'm concerned with the number of units that they're trying to cram in there. And as I said before, I want... I've really helped make this the kind of neighborhood people want to live in. But I want development here to be for long-term residents, not people who are only going to be here for a short time. And I don't see these tiny little apartments as being the kind of place where someone's going to want to put down roots the way I have and is going to want to stay in the community. And I'm really concerned that all of these little studio apartments is going to change what has made this a great community to live in by bringing in a large number of people who don't put down roots.
Okay, unfortunately, that's not a zoning of appeals matter. But we can't restrict that. John Henry Clark, would you...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I can get the record straight. Was Ira listed as an opponent?
He was a proponent. He spoke as a proponent.
With concerns.
With concerns.
And Ronald, I never got Ronald's last name at 173 Shirley Ave.
That's Hogan.
Is Hogan, H-O-G-A-N.
And I never got the last speaker's name.
The last speaker shows up as Ira. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jan Dumas, D-U-M-A-S, 50 Walnut Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We are now going on to opponents. There are several hands raised here. I will go down the line here and start off with Ina Tall. Please state your name and address for the record.
I think you may have muted her accidentally.
Now she's...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, my name is Ina Tall, and I live at 100B Florence Avenue. And I am an opponent because I feel like the process has been rushed. And many of the, you know, community residents have not been able to participate in the process. And we do have some concerns, like many of my community members have mentioned earlier. We feel like those units are... They don't seem to be, you know, matching the rest of the community, meaning that they're not family-oriented, and they're just going to change the...
Okay, I have to stop this because you have to stick to the Zoning Board of Appeals matters. I apologize, but the type of unit that it is, is we don't go by family or long-term leases. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
I just ask you to briefly state what your opposition is as far as concerned as the appeals, and we have to continue on.
Okay. So number one is, yes, would be then the issue that, you know, those buildings will house too many people and not offer enough parking. Number two is that the community was not, you know, involved in the decision-making process. And, yeah, well, I guess I'll stop there.
Well, you've stated with the last two, so I think we have the crust of what you would, what your concerns are.
Correct.
Is the next person would be Ronald? Or did you already speak, Ronald?
He spoke as a proponent.
He spoke already.
The next person, I can't tell with all these hands raised. Unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. If anyone wishes to speak, they can take out their mute.
Chairman Tucker, can you hear me?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker? This is Bonnie, who at 44 Dehon Street. Again, heavy heart, opposed for the same reasons. And I want to reiterate that I'm a resident of this neighborhood within walking distance to all three projects.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Anne Steinman. I live at 45 Thornton Street and manage a property at 111 Thornton Street. Opposed the same reasons as I stated before, but also this one, it is... The building is too high and scrambling too many people in. So, and definitely not enough parking.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Ave. Just want to go on the record opposing the project for the same reasons: lack of community process, too big, too much, too many, too little parking, no process.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else at this time. I will make...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Was Jan, was Jan Dumas to be recorded as an opponent?
Is she still online here?
She's an opponent.
Yes, Jan Dumas was an opponent.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Is there another calendar item number?
I just, for the record, just stated, Anne Steinman's statement also opposed to the lack of process for the community to get involved.
Unfortunately, as the Zoning Board of Appeals, the lack of process is not, is not put to us involvement. This was posted. Unfortunately, that's not something that we get involved with. That would be the award counselor or the developers, whatever.